City of Milton, Common Council meeting on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014 at 7:01 PM. I'll ask for confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
Pardon my microphone, it kind of failed on me. The agenda was posted at Piglou Bigley, the Shaw Municipal Building, Dave's Hardware, and the amended agenda was made directly available to the media.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Two, which is to welcome citizens and address any questions or concerns that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to Item Three, which is a presentation from Jim Cannon from the Lions Club International in regard to creation of a City of Milton Chapter of the Lions Club.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor, distinguished members of council, Police Chief, City Treasurer, Secretary, and members of the gallery, thank you for the opportunity to speak here before City Council to tell you about the exciting news that I want to share with the citizens of Milton. We are bringing a new Lions Club to the Milton area, and it could encompass some communities around Milton, but for those who are not fully familiar with our organization, we are the world's largest nonprofit, non-governmental humanitarian service organization in the world. We truly do have the globe covered in 208 countries involving a little over 46,000 Lions Clubs with a general membership of 1.35 million community-minded men and women who want to serve the needs and give back to the folks in the community who need our help. You know, our motto is "We Serve," and that pretty much says what our goal is, what our strive for in humanitarian services. If there's a need in the community, we will service that need. We have been to every natural and man-made disaster around the globe. Pick something, and we have been there, not necessarily as the first responders, but certainly to support the first responders and to offer humanitarian aid and help to those directly affected. We've been to the tsunami, 9/11, China earthquake. Say, for example, the Haiti earthquake. I'm sure many of you recall seeing these news reporters standing in front of a sea of blue tents behind them. That was $2 million worth of tents that we provided for emergency housing to the citizens of Haiti. These are the things that we do globally, free, because there's a need out there to service humanitarian efforts. We are currently involved in a measles eradication movement in Africa, but aside from our global initiatives that we do, we focus primarily on the needs of the communities where we start our Lions Clubs. There is a service need here in the Milton area, so this is why we're bringing a new club to this area, to help the folks in need. Now, you might say, "Well, what can you do to help the folks in Milton?" Well, I see a lot of us, like me, who have reached the age that presbyopia has taken over our eyes, and there are many diabetics out there whose eyes change as radically as once a month, three times a year, and they can't afford glasses. We will partner with an optometrist, we will pay for an exam, and we will buy them glasses. I'm sure many of you here have children, grandchildren, who have glasses or have had them for a very short period of time, because glasses break. Somehow, they just don't stand up to what kids do. Well, we do that. But it's not just about eyesight. You know, in 1925, Helen Keller challenged the Lions of the world at Cedar Point, Ohio, to become the Knights of the Blind Against Darkness. That's been our main mantra since 1925. But we also know that because of diabetes, poor eye health is a resulting factor of diabetes. We partner with Belton Hearing Aids. I'm sure many of you have heard about former President Jimmy Carter. We partner with his foundation Habitat for Humanity, but I bet a lot of you do not know that President Carter is a Lion. He has held the same offices that I've held, and he is just as dedicated to humanitarian service, as you all know. These are the things that we can bring and are going to bring to Milton, but we need your help in doing it. It takes 20 members to get a club started. These charter members will make important decisions about picking the name of the club. What could we call a Lions Club in Milton, Wisconsin? I think they all will figure that out, right? You will decide when to meet, where to meet. We want you to meet someplace free, whether it's council chambers, whether it's a library, whether it's a school, the fire department, a church, because we do not spend public monies on ourselves. But most importantly, you will decide how often to meet. We are a very busy society. We multitask at so many things during the day and night that we have very little time for something else, but if you can find one hour, an hour and a half, or two hours a month in your heart to help someone else, then you will be a Lion, okay? So, you all have received, if you have not, we'll gladly get you one, a brief brochure about our association. On the back is our website, lionsclubs.org. Please visit that. We have gotten very good at helping folks over the past 96 years. We're very proud of our history, proud about the things that we do at the grassroots level and local communities like Milton, and in that, you should have a charter application. You will see on that that it is a $1,000 or $30 to become a leader in your community to help start this humanitarian service organization here. That $30 gets you enrolled in our association. It gets you a monthly magazine. It gets you a window to Cal for your car, your home, your business, City Hall, police station, and of course, the valuable Lions pin that has a small banner at the bottom that says "Charter Member." The significance of that is that as a founder, everyone will recognize that you were the leaders in bringing this humanitarian service help to the community. We don't ask for anything in return. We get lots in return for the good feeling of helping someone else. That's my rant on earth, to help someone else. I hope you'll get on board. I hope you'll support us. I hope you'll get involved and talk to your neighbors, your friends, your relatives, your in-laws, even your outlaws, if you get along with them, because it's so important. There are folks out there, ladies and gentlemen, that need our help, because they may be employed, they may have to have Obamacare insurance, but that doesn't mean they're surviving on everything that we can provide to them, whether it's helping folks who are behind in their heating fuel bill, because it's skyrocketed with these temperatures. Whatever it is, think of something as far off the wall that you can think of. We have done it to help someone else. If we haven't, we haven't thought of it, or that need hasn't arisen, but we will, if we're asked to, free of charge. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. I'm going to be wandering around town all week, and I hope to be able to chat with each of you individually at some time during the time that I'm here. I'll answer any questions you might have, but I know you have other urgent business to deal with this evening. Thank you, Counselor.
I just have one question. How do you determine who gets what? I mean, how do you establish priorities? Is that done by the group, the charter group?
Excellent question, yes. We in the Lions Organization, we want a broad base of members coming to the table at our Lions Club, and each businessperson here, each member of the community, is going to hear about someone who's had a problem that we can help with. We will become known in the community, and we will be available to community members to come to us for help, for eyeglasses, for handicap ramp, for wheelchair, for medical equipment, whatever the need is. We're going to be well-publicized and well-known that folks will come to us, but yes, you as a member will bring that information to the table to determine who needs help and how best can we help them, and of course, then we have to raise money to do that, and every penny we collect from the public, we give back 100%. As a 501(c)(4) nonprofit, we keep nothing, dollar in, dollar out. Our association is run solely on our dues, which are very reasonable, for international at $43 a year. Our Lions fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, and the clubs are billed semi-annually in January and July, so the international dues are very reasonable at $21.50. We try to make it as easy as possible for folks to join and to stay members and to help the community and get that payback of a good feeling, because, ladies and gentlemen, we don't ask anything of anybody. You will get it free if you need it, okay? We do free eye screening for everyone, children, adults, the elderly. Any other que-- did that answer your question, Alderman? Okay. Any other questions, concerns?
Questions? Thank you very much for being here, we appreciate it.
And thank you, and I just have one final comment. I know where you all live. So, be expecting a call, and I'll catch up with you to talk with you privately. Thank you again so much. Bye.
We will move on to Item Four, which is the approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me. Item Five is old business. Discussion and possible action on Axley Brendelson engagement agreement for legal services regarding Evermore Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is on the agenda. The parameters of an agreement that were authorized by the council at their last meeting in open session were now presented in the form of a document that was created by Mr. Tim Fenner, who works for Axley Brendelson, and that is the firm that was recommended by the council. Our existing legal counsel attorney, Mark Schrader, who works for Consini, has declared a conflict of interest due to the fact that that firm also represents the town of Fulton. So, staff's recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement for reimbursement as presented, and then present that to Mr. Watson for his attorney's consideration.
Jerry, can you please clarify why we are entering into this sort of an agreement at this point?
Yes, because there has been discussions to date about a proposed and a potential annexation of 43 different parcels of property and over 2,000 acres of land. The expenses that would be associated with that include potential annexation fees, the creation of annexation plat maps or engineering fees, as well as additional engineering fees and attorney fees. So, really, three to four different categories, depending on what is all needed, but for sure, we know we're going to need the annexation fees reimbursed. A preliminary estimate on that was just over $51,000. The annexation plats that would potentially need to be developed would be another potential for $45,000 to $50,000. And then attorney fees, at this particular point, are yet not known, due to the fact that it depends on whether or not the issues proceed as presented with a unanimous petition for, or with a unanimous petition for annexation of the property owners, or if the development seeks to proceed a different way, all of which would require your approval. So, it would just really depend, but this was the most all-encompassing agreement, and those are the parameters that you had sought, and I think it's important, Mayor, if you don't mind me saying, for what you had, what happened yesterday afternoon, the council was briefed on. I feel it's important that the public know. Mr. Watson had sent us the proposed agreements, similar to like what he has with the towns of Milton and towns of Fulton, along with a $5,000 check. After consulting with Mayor Frazier yesterday, and well as sharing that information with our attorney, we are going to send that check back, because we don't have a signed agreement related to the reimbursement yet, and we do not need to have Mr. Watson's money to cash flow this project. We would rather reimburse him for invoices that we get from our legal services team, engineers, or surveyors, if and only if we have a signed agreement for that reimbursement. So, that's why we're recommending it, that it be the reimbursement agreement prepared before by our attorney that fits the City of Milton's proposed way of doing its business, and that we present that, because that's the terms that you had asked us to put together.
Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody here representing the firm that we chose?
We do not, no.
Okay, because I, in looking through their, the firm's webpage and stuff, I'm a little concerned about one of their attorneys, and they might have a conflict of interest. Buck Sweeney is an aggregate spokesman. He speaks in behalf of aggregate endeavors, and I don't know if that's a conflict of interest with what we're trying to do with this, or, you know, I just wish we had somebody here that we could talk to about being a possible conflict of interest.
When we went through this election process, and I had Attorney Fenner, apparently there's some program that they can type a name into or something and run something, and he did that. He did not see any conflicts of interest, but that was something that they had done prior to accepting this. Under the old business, under subsection A, the proposed agreement with Axley Brendelson just essentially defines the terms of their agreement, meaning that they're going to work for the city, they represent the interests of the city, the hourly rate that they're going to charge. Agenda Item Letter Five, or Five B specifies what is the pre-annexation agreement, which talks about the full reimbursement of all costs. So, there's really two separate components on your agenda.
But we don't have a signed agreement from Mr. Watson that he's going to pay us.
We do not. We do not, nope. That's what Agenda Five B would be.
So, if we agree to go ahead with this law firm, and then, for whatever reason, we can't agree with Mr. Watson for reimbursement fees, I mean, we're not out any money, right? If we haven't spent any money? I mean, there isn't a fee for us not contracting with them after we say we're going to contract with them?
Well, they have to at least come up with an agreement that they're proposing to Mr. Watson, so there are some services that they will begin with, regardless of whether Mr. Watson agrees to it or not.
So, they're going to look at his, they're the ones that are going to do our agreement with Watson? Okay, so there would be minimal fees incurred if we couldn't come up with an agreement? Okay.
We're absolutely sure there's no conflict of interest.
He ran it through the program and said, "I need to check first to make sure I don't have a conflict of interest," and he told me he did not.
And it's their responsibility to identify a conflict of interest, correct?
Yes, that's correct. It's their responsibility, and if during the process one develops, it's their responsibility to notify the city. So, yeah, this, you know, the issue of Mr. Attorney Sweeney being raised, that'll have to be run past them and see if and to what extent he's involved in this. That's--
I just wish you would ask the question. I mean, I was, you know, I was one that was in favor of this attorney because of the background that we looked at, and so I have no problem with his qualifications. I just want to make sure there's no conflict of interest within his firm--
Sure. And that's correct. That does need to be verified by them, and so that is their responsibility. You're correct, so that can be followed up on. The only other comment I have, Mayor, for Five B, which is the pre-annexation agreement, is that in no way, shape, or form, and I think it's very clearly spelled out in that agreement, that us presenting that to Mr. Watson does in any way, shape, or form compel the city to accept the annexation. It does not. There is a lot of preparatory work that has to go in, as you folks know, you've done some annexations over the last 12 months, that there is preparatory work with respect to the filing fees and the necessary engineering work and survey work prior to submitting all of that paperwork to the Department of Administration, the stuff that Michelle has to send in for their review to determine whether or not it is or is not in the public interest. So, that's what these costs would be recovered, so that they would not be done at City of Milton taxpayer expense.
Well, there needs to be a lot more information forthcoming from Mr. Watson, as far as details for an annexation agreement ever leaves the city.
Are we going to get a chance to talk to the attorney before he drafts any agreement?
Yes, we can certainly arrange that to happen.
Yeah, I think that would be, it would be important for me to be able to ask him some questions before we even go that far.
Well, we have no clue what he intends to do out there, and I think we need to be, have things in writing so that we don't, you know, if we annex in and he would sell a property to somebody else and they didn't sign the agreements that he's made with us, and then there we sit. Well, I think we need, like Dave said, we've got to have more information from him as what he intends to do.
Well, yeah, I was, my comment was addressed towards the actual annexation. This here is preliminary to that.
Yes.
And I think we need to make the decision if we're going to engage those folks, and maybe we put a requirement on that agreement, that they verify to us that there is no conflict of interest with it, within that firm.
That makes sense.
The recommended action would be to authorize staff to execute the engagement letter with Axley Brendelson. The amendation to that would be contingent upon execution of the proposed reimbursement agreement and verification that there is no conflict of interest with the attorney that Alderman Verwink had mentioned.
Attorney Schrader's recommending that we keep the two agenda items separate, so I think you recommend it, as I understood it--
This was recommended.
Right, yeah, it had two pieces, so are you still comfortable with that? I think that, from what I understand from the conversation, Mayor, is that the, it sounds like the council would be leaning towards perhaps approving the engagement agreement subject to verification that there's no conflict within the firm.
Right.
That's what I think on that, and so I think that would be one action, and then the second would be whether or not to approve what's termed the pre-annexation or reimbursement agreement. So, I think those can be kept separate, because you could still approve that agreement even if, for some reason, it was determined that the attorney couldn't serve because of some other conflict, so that's why I'm suggesting keeping them separate.
Okay.
I guess I would move to have the administrator or the staff engage or execute the letter of engagement with Axley Brendelson.
Can I ask a question before we do the--
Let's get a second on this, and then we're going to have this question. Motion and a second.
Can we make that motion so that we have a chance to talk to the attorney before we draft anything, so we can have a right to give him some questions?
The reimbursement agreement is already drafted and is here for your review in Item Five B.
Right, but that's why I want to be able to ask him questions about it, though.
Well, we can't if we don't hire him.
Right.
Hire him first.
Okay, but then we're going to accept an agreement that we haven't had any input into.
No, that's, we'll do that next.
Right, we haven't, that would be the second part.
Okay.
There's a motion and a second to approve staff, or authorize staff to execute an engagement letter with Axley Brendelson for legal services, contingent upon verification that there is no conflict of interest. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item Five B is discussion and possible action regarding pre-annexation agreement related to the Evermore Development Project.
Thank you, Mayor. It was somewhat talked about in conjunction with Agenda Item Five A. Attorney Fenner did draft this pre-annexation agreement for the proposed Evermore Development. It talks completely about a full reimbursement of costs related to annexation, development of annexation plats with our engineering fees, any other additional engineering fees that would be required, and a reimbursement of all legal services associated with an analysis of the proposed development. It does not in any way compel the city or its elected officials or staff to recommend or accept the annexation. It just simply indicates that the preliminary work associated with an annexation request would be fully reimbursed by Mr. Watson and the Evermore Development Group.
And, Mr. Verwink, you're interested in, in addition to the document itself, having him here to discuss--
Right, I would feel more comfortable if I could ask him questions about it, or, I mean, we can agree to go ahead with this, but before anything is ever drafted, there's a lot of questions that I need answered first.
Something drafted different than what's already drafted?
No, this can be fine, because it isn't obligating us--
You're referring--
It's not obligating us to anything.
You're referring to any agreement to annex.
Right, right, right. To annex. This doesn't obligate us to anything, so I'm okay with that.
If something like that were to ever come forward, which seems like a moving target, we would certainly be in consultation with our attorney--
And the attorney would be your president.
As a council, yes.
And this is just the agreement, but it is not a binding for the council.
Correct.
It's just an agreement for reimbursement of expenses.
They don't see why we're doing it to begin with, because we have nothing in writing of him. We have nothing to discuss.
We also, we also have no legal representation on this at all, at this point. Mark cannot give us legal counsel.
We need to get that, we need to--
The thought process behind our attorney recommending that document is, should he present, as he just said he would, an annexation petition, we would immediately start incurring costs. We have stuff that we have to do. The statutes kind of prescribe that that's what has to be done, and so what we want to do is make sure, we've done other pre-annexation agreements, that it is all the expense on the petitioner, not on the city or not anybody else, because we need to know who's going to pay the fee, who's going to send it in, you know, how that, all that is going to work. And this reimbursement agreement says that all those expenses are on him, and so my suspicion is, if when he sees that agreement, he's going to come back to us and say, "Hey, this is a lot of money. I would like some assurances that something else is going to happen," and that probably is the potential for some negotiations to happen within that, because I don't think, I don't think, I don't know, but I don't think that Mr. Watson's going to say, "Sure, I'll spend $100,000 only to have you folks not vote to accept an annexation." I don't think that would happen. I think that he's going to seek some, there'll be a dialogue and a volley of dialogue for which that would be your opportunity to then speak to our attorney, and then potentially speak to Mr. Watson, say, "We want to know what you're going to do." That would be what I would think could potentially happen.
Well, this is really no different than anybody else that we sell land to that wants to develop, but we want to know what they're going to do. I mean, this isn't a new procedure that we've just decided to implement. We're following every procedure that we have always followed. Well, I'll make the motion that we direct staff to go forward with the pre-annexation agreement for the proposed Evermore Development. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I am.
Opposed? Motion carries. I will announce it, because I suspect some folks are going to leave after that agenda item. After talking with some folks and staff and desiring to have an opportunity for public input on the potential I-90 interchange and also the possible industrial development on Milton's west side, I'm going to call a special council meeting for next Thursday, February 13th, at 6:00 PM here in these chambers. This will be essentially conducted as a listening session for the council and staff. This will be an opportunity for citizens of the City of Milton and other municipalities to share their thoughts and concerns on any potential development or interchange project. This will be not a public hearing in the sense that there will be no action taken that night, but it will be an opportunity for folks to speak, ask questions of staff or the council, if that's appropriate. The developer will not be at this presentation, since this is simply a part of our process of doing our due diligence to determine a course forward as a community. So, next Thursday at 6:00 PM, we thought it was important to give people an opportunity to speak and share thoughts. There will be registration and some time limits, so we're not here till the Thursday after, but we will make that time available, and we look forward to seeing many of you back then. We'll quickly move on, then, to Item Five C, is discussion and possible action on City of Milton Logo Project. Milton logo project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated in your council packets, there are two different logo options for you to review. As part of the city's ongoing partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, they had a sign committee, a generous grant from the Milton Fund. We're trying to keep this process moving along so that we can also use the new logo in the new sign, new welcome to Milton sign that we plan to hopefully build this spring if we can get the logo issue worked out. This is a project that's probably been in the works for, ever, seemingly forever, but officially about 18 months. We have, have had three different firms, the University of Wisconsin Whitewater Student Marketing Association, folks from Signal Fire, and then Stacy Hope, who developed the Crossroads Park logo. So three different consultants that have assisted with that project. And so there are two different options for you on your iPads to view. And wanted to get the dialogue that you had. One of them is a depiction, and I'm sorry, I did not bring a larger visual, but is a depiction of Main Hall with block letters that read City of Milton and a, with the theme, "Community Since 1838." The other one is a depiction of the Crossroads Park logo that has a combination of the rail, the sun, and roadway depicting the bypass and essentially the more of a modern look, the one that has been seen and described before. So those went out in your packets, and I'll recommend that we open it up for discussion about what everybody thinks, so.
We've come, we've come this far, we may as well just keep going.
I like the one that has the most red on it.
When we started this process, the idea was to, I thought, to find a logo that was significant to Milton, couldn't be identified with anyplace else, and it was more modernized. The Crossroads Park logo, if you take Milton off there, could fit any city, anywhere in this country or the world that's got a railroad track and highway. So that doesn't make it. The second one, if we're gonna look at historical properties, the Main Hall is not what I would be looking at. We have the only hexagonal grout building in the country on that logo right there. Now, if you don't like the trains on there, fine, but that logo, if you take the City of Milton off and everything else, it's still identified with this community only. Now, we've got, I think, about $6,500 invested in this search so far. I think we're far short of getting our money's worth. I don't think we've reached our goal. And I've heard the suggestion, if it was put to the high school art class out there, we probably could've done better.
Perhaps. I will be.
I agree with Anissa, I like the red, and I agree with Dave and Ed, so let's just...
That's what I said at tourism. I said, we should take the trains out, leave it as it is, and take the water out and add something, and we've got something. But I'm with Dave. I don't, if we're gonna put any different building in there, rather than to have the Main Hall or the library or anything, let's put this police department and the old City Hall building in there.
It would make more sense in a building that's for sale to be on our logo. It just, I don't get it.
Different building, but yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Well, we can put the Milton House into that, right?
So you wanna swap the Main Hall?
What about Main Hall for the Milton House?
Just take the trains out and the water and add your...
Oh, you want the oval still?
The community since 1838, and you got it, and we're $6,500 short.
Can we get rid of the orange and the blue?
Well, I don't care about the color, yeah.
Oh, the colors, yes.
As you're saying, we...
What was the feedback from the chamber?
The chamber preferred the Main Hall-looking logo, that one, that theme of the red and the black.
The one that's for sale.
It's a different building. Goodrich Hall is for sale, Main Hall is where the College Preservation Society is.
But, you know, I don't see our change, like Dave said, I don't, I don't see our changing the Main Hall from the Milton House.
Yep, here's why I suggest that. If you're gonna look at something significantly historical, what's the most significant building we have in the city? We've only got one on national registry. And that's Milton House.
So what if, what if that, that logo, instead of having Main Hall, did have a treatment of the Milton House in it?
Then we could pass it.
Might work.
It involves to keep the red.
I will, I will, I will let everyone in on a secret here. I became so frustrated with this process one day that I personally paid for the development of the logo with the, the red through an online service. And it doesn't, it doesn't, certainly doesn't have to be the logo we go with, but we are getting to a point where I think it's important that we do make a decision. And I agree, the issue that, when I tried to have them work with the Milton House in there was, it ended up looking like a box next to another box.
The way it looks today.
I did.
Not with that one.
I did, yeah.
It depends on, do you want it how it looks today on the logo, or do you want it like that?
Take the old one, because that would look, then it looks 1838.
I found an angle that works, too, so I can have them revise that.
You got many revisions?
Yes. I've used my revisions.
Is there a general consensus then from the council to work with staff and the mayor to transition to that logo with the Milton House in it? I mean, to, to, yeah. Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we would bring it back to you, but I mean, so that we know, we stop working with people on that.
No money in this part.
I think that's, Dave's suggestion is good.
Red and black is the color scheme that we're seeking?
It seems to have been quite popular with people, going with that, so.
It gives a better, it gives a better contrast, I think. Teresa doesn't think so.
She likes it.
Yeah, I was talking about the other one. It looked like a pineapple.
Some people think, some people see a football, someone said baseball.
Yeah, that's what Anissa said.
Hey, that's progress, that's a lot of progress.
Now we're having fun.
I think we're figuring defenses here.
And we hate them both.
That's its direction.
At some point, we're going to make a list of the things we've spent less time on than the City of Logo or City of Milton Logo developments.
It's always something stupid.
All right.
Things are easy and some are not.
Some things are less easy. Agenda item six is new business. Item A is presentation from Ellers Investment Partners, Ken Herdeman.
Are you presenting a logo?
Yeah. You don't want my ideas on a logo. I have no imagination when it comes...
I like your tie.
Oh, thank you. You can, you can thank my wife for that. See, it's easy for me to pick out shirts, you know, so she picks out the ties. So thank you very much for letting me speak with you tonight. There's two things I would just like to address with you tonight, is one, give you just a brief report on the performance of what we've been doing so far. You engaged us for the second time last March to manage your investments. At beginning, we did some preliminary work, so it was beginning last May, May 2013 is when we actually started managing investments for you. And to the tune of about a million and a half per month is what we're managing. For the nine months that ended January 31st, you earned a gross earnings of a little over $7,000, $7,175 on that million and a half. You paid us about $1,400 in investment advisory fees, so your net return was $5,779. Okay? What I would like to do is compare that to a benchmark, and that being the local government investment pool. So if you would've put that million and a half dollars in the Wisconsin local government investment pool, you would've earned $790. Okay? So even after you paid our investment advisory fees, your net interest earnings on the funds that we're managing for you was almost $5,000, $4,982. Now, we didn't do that by taking more risk with your funds or anything like that. When we were first engaged, we, we went through a process of doing a cash forecast for you. So what we were able to do with that is to look at some investment alternatives that you have, mainly longer term. You had been investing in basically money market accounts and things like that, so we were able to identify your cash flows when you needed funds. So essentially, the portfolio that we managed for you, the average weighted maturity is a little bit more than two years. So that's the, that's the way we've been able to achieve that return, is just by taking permissible investments that are allowed for you by the state statutes and by the, by your investment policy and investing those longer term. So that's how we've been able to do that. Okay? The other thing that I wanted to speak with you about is when we, when we initially executed the investment advisory agreement last March, there were two items in that agreement. One is that the, the agreement referred to Ellers Investment Partners as a municipal advisor. Now, with the Dodd-Frank bill that was essentially just enacted, has, defines what a municipal advisor is. And when, when that legislation first came around in 2010, they, the municipal, the MSRB, Municipal Securities Rule Making Board, asked any investment advisor, financial advisor that may sometime be considered to fit the definition of a municipal advisor to register, to temporarily register as a municipal advisor, which we did. We have always been a registered investment advisor with the SEC. And, but at the time, we registered as a municipal advisor as well. While the final definition came out of a municipal advisor last September, we felt that we did not fit that, that definition. And due to the fact that we were always a registered investment advisor with the SEC, we did not renew our registration as a municipal advisor. So the agreement that you have in front of you takes out any reference to Ellers Investment Partners as a municipal advisor. That's one change. The other change in the agreement that we originally signed is it was, we put a, a date certain on there, that, that the agreement was good for one year from the date of execution. That date, that renewal date, if you will, would come up March 20th of, of this year. So what we, and I hope this is agreeable with you, we've taken that date out and basically just the first paragraph of the agreement says you can terminate the agreement anytime with 30 days' notice, which has to be in any agreement that we have, any investment advisor agreement that we have with anyone. So those are just the two things in that, and I say the, the investment advisor agreement you have in front of you is exactly the same as the one you signed a year ago, except for those two items. It does not refer to us as a municipal advisor, and it just changes that date, but you still have the, the right and the authority to terminate the agreement anytime with 30 days' Any questions?
What's the difference between being a municipal advisor and not being a municipal advisor?
Essentially, it's just who you're registered with, who your regulators are. Your financial advisor, Ellers and Associates, is a municipal advisor. They are registered as a municipal advisor. They are not registered as an investment advisor. So they can give you financial advice on your bond issues, your five-year planning, things like that, but they are not registered, Todd, Taves, and, you know, whoever, whoever, could not give you investment advice. Okay? But, but ourselves, as a registered investment advisor regulated by the SEC, the Securities and Exchange Commission, we are authorized or registered to be able to, to provide investment advice for you.
Do they have what restrictions? I mean, you can't, do they let you invest in any way you want, or do they have parameters because you're dealing with city dollars?
You have, you have parameters based on two things. Is one, state statutes only allows you as a, as a municipality to invest in certain things, and those are, those are named, detailed in state statutes. Plus, your, your investment policy also refers to, to state statutes and has some other limitations as well. So yeah, there's, there's a pretty short list of things that you are permitted to invest in, and as part of the investment advisor agreement, we certify that we have your investment, your, your investment policy and will adhere to it.
Any additional questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Okay, so the recommended action tonight would be to approve the contract for Ellers Investment Partners to continue to invest the city's funds for 2014.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C is discussion and possible action regarding PD Admin Building Update and Color Finishes with Angus Young, Jim Tibbetts. And I see our project manager, Jason Zimzo, is here as well.
I was asked, oh, a couple weeks ago, just to come and give the council a project update, brief project update. I can in hindsight say I have been involved in designing a logo for a client about four or five years ago. Please do not ask me to weigh in any input. I'd rather design a 10-story building before that. As you can see, driving by the site now, it's starting to take shape. It's starting to look like something after all the dust has settled and some walls are going up in the building. You're gonna have an idea right now of what the building's gonna look like. Currently, they're just completing masonry unit on the north end, which was a tough task, as Jason would attest, due to our weather. Weather has been complicated throughout this process. In another process, we've gone through and have brought samples, we've got all the finishes picked out for both sides, for the admin and the police department, and I'll get that out in a minute. But I guess I would just like to ask if anybody had any questions on the council, where we're at? We've got a tentative completion date about mid-June. We, we've kind of stated throughout several progress meetings, and we do have a progress meeting tomorrow morning. We have them bi-weekly. That's where all the contractors, subcontractors, and then city staff who is available comes to the meetings, discuss any issues, and really just evaluate how the project's going as a whole. By the end of this month, we'll have a better idea of the exact completion date, which gives, obviously, you know, it's just not move, you know, grabbing a U-Haul and moving your belongings to a new home. There is, you kind of have to, you know, forward your address, make some new mailing labels, et cetera. Hopefully, the logo is set by then. And then, and then it helps, yeah, and then it helps with some of the furniture and equipment that needs to be provided for the new departments. We're in the process of working with city staff, just helping them organize that, and I know Michelle and Brett and, of course, the police chief have been involved in getting some of their wish lists together and then kind of pairing it down and making the final color selections for that. So that's the kind of behind-the-scenes things that are going on right now. It's kind of exciting. I get excited at this point, just when the things start going together, once we get out of the ground, and we can kind of see the end coming up there, even though Jason probably thinks he threatens the weather forecast every week as a threat, but I think we're, we're at the point where the building's gonna be enclosed. We'll be able to do some more heating. Part of the building is heated right now, but we'll be able to do some more heating. We do have some more interior concrete work, and obviously, we need some warmer temperatures for that. But shingles are gonna start to go on in the near future, and then in the spring, just because of the way that the building was designed, it'll be... be weather-protected, so you'll see plywood on the outside of the building, but it will be weather-protected. And then in the spring, you'll see that final finish is where the exterior masonry veneer starts to go on. So don't fret that, you see, you know, we've got a building sitting out there in the weather, but it'll be protected with a house wrap, or I call it a house wrap, but it's a Tyvek or some sort of material that will keep weather from permeating into the structure. So we're having a little bit of issues, obviously, you find from time to time with an existing building that had some leaking problems. But with Jason's hindsight and foresight, we've been able to tackle those things before they become an issue. So it's an exciting project. And as I mentioned before, I'm not going to go into great detail, but, and I'll leave these with Michelle. So she's been in the selection process for the materials. But briefly, as far as materials go, I mean, they're nice and modest. This is actually the material selection board for the police department side. What we did was nothing flashy, nice, rich-toned colors, nothing that's going to be outdated, no shag carpet or anything like that going in the building.
No paneling.
No paneling. There will be block walls, but there'll be block walls in the garage and a couple of rooms that hopefully none of you folks actually enjoy in the future. But the majority of it is all materials that are going to wear nice. And I say "wear nice," that means it's not going to start falling apart in about five years. In the main corridors, it is a carpet tile. It's a little thicker, it's a thicker material. And if there is a wear pattern or wearing showing, then you'll actually be able to pull that up and just replace it with a similar tile. Or if it gets, if staff in the future feels it's a little dated in the main corridors, it's not that hard to replace. So that's the kind of thing that our interior staff strive to look at, is how the materials are going to be wear and how the colors are going to stay productive throughout the lifetime of the building. And just so, as you can see, the administration side, there are a little bit of difference nuances from each side, but we tried to keep it so as you're walking through the facility, it's not, you're not tripping over a boundary. So it's a flow from one section of the building to the next, and kind of using the council chambers as that median to travel from one side of the building to the other. So I do not pick colors out, I'm not allowed to, but I think between the staff and everybody involved, I think they did a very nice job, so. And I'll leave these with Michelle.
Are there any questions?
How close are we to being on time and on budget?
Currently, as far as budget, I think I mentioned, oh, it seems like light years away when we first started talking about the contract, about getting up out of the ground. I believe, from my latest meeting minutes that I sent out in Conneal, I don't have the numbers, I was briefly, frantically looking through my binder, as a change order percentage on the project right now, we're at about 1.38%. I believe on this project, we budgeted a 5% contingency. So we're over that hump where things can go bad with soils, or finding an underground fuel tank, little things like that that do pop up. Bedrock, that was always a good one. We did do some soil borings on the beginning of the project. With soil borings, that guy gives our structural engineers an idea of what kind of depths that we have to have our footings and foundations at. It doesn't mean that you can't take a soil boring at every spot on the site. You're going to hit veins of poor soil. Actually, it's not poor soil if you're a farmer, it's great soil for that. Lot of black dirt, a lot of clay material that is not suitable for construction. So we already had that parameters, and then we've run into some other areas where poor soils were encountered. So we're out of the ground, all the footing and foundation work is done. It's just a matter of little things here and there. Obviously, we're dealing with an existing building, but being at 1.4, whatever percent I stated, that's pretty good for being out of the ground, so. We're on budget. And as far as schedule, I know there's some slack in the schedule to make up some time, but hopefully, hopefully, spring comes sooner than later.
For a variety of reasons.
Yes. There's plenty of work to be done. As Jason gets the building enclosed, obviously, once you get the roof on, once you get that layer around the perimeter that keeps it weather-tight, they've got a hole inside of a building to finish. And then it'll be, it'll be a quick action in the spring to beat everybody else out for, to get blacktop down and get the paving down and all that, so. It'll come quick. It will.
Yeah, the council may know that they have not seen change orders yet on the agenda. We got the majority of those sent to us over the past half. There are some staff questions that we have of the design firm, as well as the construction company, so that we make sure what we present to you is what we would recommend that you approve. So those will be discussed tomorrow, and I'd anticipate they will be on the February 18th council meeting for your consideration.
Great. Any more questions for Jim? All right. Thank you very much for being here.
See you tomorrow.
Yes. Item D is discussion and possible action authorizing the purchase of additional software licenses for the Clarity software used for utility billing and accounting.
This request is made partially due to the additional staffing that we have with the co-op team and a half-time utility billing clerk. We don't have enough licenses for all of us to use Clarity at the same time, and then also maintain a cash register. Plus, in July, when we moved to the City Hall building, the utility billing clerks and one other person, I don't know who that is yet, will each have their own window, but as they take breaks, those of us, those of the staff that will be replacing them or filling in for them as they're at lunch, will need to use their computers, so we'll continue to need the additional licenses. Also, as we're doing the server, the new server for the City Hall, that server is going to be designed such that the city will actually be logging into our server to do their work. And what that means is, is that we can create a workstation for the water operators down at the water plant, and they can log into Clarity if we have the additional users, and they will be able to see the meter information, the customer information, the locations, and all of the data that we maintain on our system, they'll be able to see it down at the water department. So we're requesting that we add, I believe it was, four licenses. Four licenses. At least one will, two will be, one will be the utility billing clerk, two will be the water operator, the additional license for the cash register. Therefore, we broke the cost up between the water and the general fund. More importantly, we proved that.
And how long do the licenses last for?
The licenses are forever. All it does is increase the number of people that can actually use the software at the same time.
And then do we pay for periodic upgrades?
We pay for maintenance, we have a maintenance agreement annually, but that maintenance agreement isn't based on what users or licenses. That maintenance agreement is based on the modules that we have purchased.
I'll move that we purchase four additional licenses for Clarity.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E is discussion and possible action to authorize an employee wellness program.
Thank you, Mayor. This was something that was actually discussed, I believe it was about two years ago. We had a different mayor. Those remember, with the meeting, it was in the Public Works Building. And the concept was, is introducing an overall employee wellness program. I would like to encourage the council, after a conversation that I had with our, as the memo indicates, our EAP program coordinator, Judy Fermosa. The city pays about $1,200 annually to offer an employee assistance program. And so annually, we meet with Judy to go over utilization of that program. We had nine visits out of a total of 44 employees in 2013. And I would like to see us get a little bit more utilization of the program, and by promoting awareness and providing employees an opportunity to go visit the EAP counselors or the folks that are there and available on staff, on duty time, I think that would be a way to do that. There have been articles that I read about this that I think demonstrate the value of having what we refer to as kind of annual wellness checkups for our employees, both the physical components, we do hearing tests and whatnot on the physical side of things, but also on the mental side as well. And so I think that there would be value to the city to better utilize its paid-for employee assistance program, and to promote the program by offering employees up to four hours of their duty time to go down to Janesville to the AP, talk to those counselors, learn about the program and its availability for themselves as employees and for their families, and just promote better utilization of the program. I'm recommending that the council authorize us and our department directors to be able to do that. The caveats, obviously, are that it cannot create an overtime or an operational undue hardship on the department, but that it would be authorized for employees to participate in, most importantly, voluntarily. We're not compelling them. Three of those nine visits that we had last year were compelled as a part of management recommendation to the employees. So I just think that we can do a better job of promoting it and utilizing that program because we're paying for it. More importantly, I think it would be beneficial for employees to know all the services that exist within it.
I make a motion that we authorize employees to be able to utilize that without creating the overtime situation.
That's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Are we giving a newsword, looking for a lead, Jerry?
It's hard to say. EAP is kind of like insurance. It's something that you want to have available for employees if they would need it and if they take advantage of it. And I don't know that we've done as good of a job as promoting it as we can, which is kind of why we're bringing forward this recommendation. It's not something that I think we want to necessarily force on people, but at the same time, I think that there are services that they offer, and we can do a better job of promoting and by creating a sense of awareness. We'll engage if we get that better utilization. When we introduced it in 2010, it came about as a result of some recommendations back from when Bob Roberts was here and studied the police department, and said that the city would be well-served to have an employee assistance program. And so in its 2010 budget at the time, the council did introduce it, and then we began having these mandates for engaging all departments, and everybody had to go. And although the utilization numbers were up, it was not really well-received by staff because it was kind of forced, like you had to go to it. Whereas, my experience with other employers has been that if it's more voluntarily and promoted and people want to do it, they will use it more.
And so is this subject to be reviewed next year, or after you see a change or a lack of change?
Yes. We would come back and we would present how many people utilized it after this has been authorized by the council to participate. So we would give out this new information to the department directors, ask them to tell all their employees at staff meetings that they have, "Hey, this is available to you. This is what the council approved." Judy reports to us actually quarterly, the utilization of EAP. Most of the times, those numbers just don't show a lot. So hoping this will down, promote the use of it.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will skip item F forever.
I think we should deny it.
Item F is discussion and possible action, accepting resignation from city treasurer, Connie DeComber.
Like you said, I make the motion, I deny it.
I think she has to talk a long time tonight.
Jerry, did you want to?
Should she have to stay if we deny it?
No, unfortunately, there are laws that are allowing her to. The pursuit of happiness, I think.
Didn't sign a contract?
Nope. Nope, she did not.
Congratulations, Angie.
Yeah, we're ready for you, but we don't want you to go.
We'll miss you.
Yeah, I'm going to miss you guys, so. I was just telling Jerry that this is the sad part, because you get attached.
They're probably all right where you're going to.
Well, maybe in a future episode, you'll return.
As long as you stay living in Milton, right?
Yes. I'll be staying here.
All right.
Promise to live here the rest of your life, or something.
I can't make that up. I have moved so much in my life, it is not any funny.
She didn't use the EAP program enough.
Maybe not. And there are some things that I think, well, we have, although Connie will be with us for one more council meeting, I think it's important that the public know, and not a lot of people know just how hard all of our managers do work. And I know many members of the councils do have that sense of appreciation, but there are over 2,400 different accounts within our general fund and another 1,900 utility customers. And Connie, in some way, shape, or form, has an impact. The treasurer position has an impact on all of those departments. Budget analysis, budget updates, can we afford to do this, can't we afford to do this? All of those different conversations. A lot of people do not realize, many people come to expect it from my position, but it is not uncommon for Connie to be here at 7:30 in the morning and not leave until 7:00 or 7:30 at night.
That's just getting into the job.
Not uncommon for Connie to be here on a Saturday or a Sunday. It is not uncommon for Michelle to be here on a Saturday or a Sunday. It is not uncommon for our police chief to work the night shift to help cover vacancies. And it is not uncommon for our public works director to work Saturday or Sunday and get up at 2:00 in the morning and figure out whether or not the guys have to come in to plow snow. So being a member of this city's management team is an extension of your entire life. These folks work so hard, and they really help make everything that happens in terms of providing the services that our citizens come to expect happen every day. And so we can only hope that we find someone with the technical expertise and the dedication that Connie has had and showed over the last two years as a replacement. On the personal side, Connie, it's been incredibly fun working with you, because you will always tell me despite an ambitious agenda when we have to say no, and when we can find a way to say yes. And so that's been fun, and I can only hope that the person...
She ripped off now, I started saying no.
Exactly. No, you can't do that. So that's been, it's been good. As we transition, I did have a meeting with Connie this afternoon. I sent to all of you a proposed timeline for her, the recruitment of that position. That outlines it would take approximately about a month. I will have a transition meeting with Connie this week, for which we'll get duty assignments, for which we believe we can assign some of those duties in-house, and which duties may, we need the assistance of, I would refer to as an interim treasurer. You'll note, like, the authorization to start the recruitment is not on there. Reason being is that you're required by your code of ordinances and state statute to have a treasurer, so you don't really have a choice of not having that position. So the issue is one of how rapidly you do the recruitment. I am going to encourage the council that we post a job ad at a salary range of somewhere between $65,000 and $70,000 a year, which would be consistent with our other department managers. And the budget would have the capacity to do that, given the vacancy that will exist. But in order to get the level of expertise, and hopefully retain that level of expertise, we're going to have to have that wage, and it's, the city has a very generous benefit package, but the wage piece, we're always susceptible to what I call the threats of Dane County. And because of the property values being what they are, we have very often been a training ground for people to, and people have come to expect that the city of Milton has its financial house in order, and they come and they get our good people. So we're going to do what we can to try to combat some of that to the fullest extent possible.
With great reluctance, I will move that we accept Connie's resignation.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the resignation. Any further discussion?
Half of us can vote no and make the mayor vote yes.
The mayor will leave.
Okay, let's do that. We're voting on.
We'll vote no on this side.
During the discussion point, I will echo what Jerry says. There are many times where I come in long after the normal workday has passed, and there is but one light on in this building, and it's Connie's office. Not saying that anyone else isn't working long hours, I know they are, but Connie is often here... often here, and I believe most of the time doesn't realize I walk by, because she is so, so deep into her work. So you'll be missed. With that, there's a motion and a second to approve, unfortunately, the resignation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, these general items. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February 18th, 2014. The, in order to have a public input, as I mentioned, I wanted to get it up before people left. Jerry and I spoke, I also spoke with Alderman Adams earlier this week, and decided it was important for the city to lead on taking public, public comment on the possibility of an county M interchange and on the, the potential for an industrial development. So that meeting looked like it worked for a lot of people, would be next Thursday, February 13th at 6:00 PM, so that is our next meeting, but it will only be a special meeting, there will be no action items.
Promise?
Promise. Promise.
I won't submit an agenda over the next.
Promise. Item B is mayor and other persons' reports. Any other persons' reports?
Yes. Something I wanted to put out to all of you. Don's heard it, Jerry's heard it, but after Mr. Watson's presentation, I was a little bit skeptical his ti, of his timing. So I did talk to a civil engineer who's got a lot of experience with interchange design, highway design, and I asked him, I said, what's, what's the development time? He said, from the time you enter into your permit rating until end of construction can run anywhere from eight to 10 years. Said, hmm, doesn't quite fit the schedule the state's got. They're going to start construction next year and be done in 2021. That's seven years. That doesn't quite fit the window. So I asked him about construct, you know, compressing time. He said, well, if you get rid of your political delays in Madison, you might get close, but he said, I think you're getting close to being out of time right now. So what, what concerns me with the timing the way it is, is that we could go through with this and end up with Mr. Watson making several hundred million dollars selling gravel. And I don't want, I don't want him walking away from an open pit out there, I don't want to see an open pit out there. It's not, that's not what we envisioned. That's why I said earlier, we've got to have details on this project, what he plans to do before we go ahead of it. But the, the timing really is an issue. I don't know how he gets it done.
And a light note, I, we sold about $2,500 of bricks to the mural again, so I'm hoping that puts us over $40,000 now.
I haven't looked, Don, I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay, okay, but I, but I'm just saying, if we can sell, you know, I think I've done it three times now, and we've reached over $2,000 each of the times, I mean, the need is, and people went away taking forms, hoping to sell more. So I think, you know, that project should be up and good, and we should be dedicating it over the Fourth of July.
Additional other persons' reports?
I have one. The Janesville and Beloit League of Women Voters, which is a nonpartisan community, is putting on the Susan B. Anthony Dinner, which I tried to invite as many of you as possible. It is February 16th. It's, it's a brunch, actually, and it's going to be at the Pontiac Convention Center. And we have a very well-known professor from UW Madison coming to portray Susan B. Anthony. We also have the president of the League of Women Voters to update us on women's voting issues, and we have a great brunch, and you're all welcome to come, men too, it's just not a women's luncheon and brunch. And it's posted on the Janesville Beloit League of Women Voters website, there's a Facebook event, and Mary Buelow, there's going, she has some information out, and there will be an article in the Janesville Gazette, so I would definitely encourage you all to go, February 16th at 11:30.
Right, love six women every day.
Then you'll fit right in.
You're welcome.
Any other other persons' reports?
I work for six every day.
Yeah.
Six work wives.
Jerry, you're late, Jerry, you're late.
That, that is true.
That's about all I hear from us.
That is an accurate portrayal of the time I spend with Jerry during the day.
Like an airplane, always having books.
That is an accurate portrayal.
Has he walked down there yet? Okay, great.
The other day, you drove over to the gathering place to get him, right? Yeah, we were having a listening session, and Connie showed up.
He didn't have a car.
To steal him.
He's got a car, he didn't want to take.
All right, I've got just a, just a couple things. First of all, the, as you all saw, the city management team met and decided on those community award recipients. In the first year, an event like that, there's, I mean, you could give out 100 awards there, and they would all be well-qualified and well-deserving. Since it's a Thursday night and a lot of people have work the next morning, we thought it would be wise to limit it to a modest number. But hoping that everyone will be able to come, $25 for an excellent meal, $45 for a couple, it's certainly an excellent value, and it's an opportunity to start up that, that tradition again, to really honor those people who do their part to make Milton the special community that it is. I today declared the apartment building on Parkview Drive a public nuisance. It's, it's not something that I take lightly. I have since had a conversation that, that confirms to me that it was the right action to have taken, but essentially, what, what the public nuisance did, and I don't know if that's been sent out to the council or anything yet, but essentially, what it did is said that the, the building is a public nuisance, I guess 30 days to get the exterior of the building complete. There was discussion on the interior and requiring an occupancy permit, but in my estimation and the estimation of, of others on the management team, we didn't believe that the occupancy issue was the public nuisance, it was the danger of the tarps and the, and the garbage and the construction and, and the, and the extraordinarily long construction timeline. I've had a conversation, I returned a phone call to the, the property owner late this afternoon, and he was understandably upset and not sure how he was supposed to meet that timeline. I encouraged him to reach out to Director Robinson for any questions regarding the building, the building permit process or expectations, and assured him that we are reasonable people who only want a public nuisance to be eliminated. So I wanted to let you all know that that was something that, that finally was done today, possibly should have been done before, but today I did that.
May I also amend that you include in some future constitution of residency or occupancy, you know, new set of timelines, a long one, because that is also a part of the issue.
We will keep that in mind. The, at the last meeting of the Goodrich Square Steering Committee, the committee voted to expand their, their scope. That committee has previously focused specifically on the Goodrich Square area and the project and plan that was arrived at a few years ago. With the advent of the Highway 26 bypass and in response to some of the comments that I heard from small business owners in, in those listening sessions recently concluded, a proposal came out of that process to have a committee that really is dedicated to action in our, in existing business districts. So the Goodrich Square Steering Committee voted in favor of reconstituting themselves as the Downtown Development Action Committee, which will take a look at and recommend policy and programs to the city council that affect both downtowns, both the Parkview Drive area, which is the Goodrich Square area, and the Merchant Row area, with the goal of having that group really take ownership of identifying a path forward in, in each of those sets of town. And ultimately, hopefully, getting us to a point where we can stop referring to ourselves as two different communities, the east side and the junction, but more looking at it holistically, and how do we build our city's two downtowns in conjunction with one another, market them effectively, connect existing business owners and new to the tools and the resources available both from the city, at the state, and then at the federal. So that is exciting stuff. There will be a new meeting coming up. We're hoping that business owners on both sides of town will be involved. We're hoping that there will be continued council involvement, and of course, the focus for the Goodrich Square will continue to be a significant portion of that committee's responsibility. And I think that is it. We'll move on to staff reports. City Administrator.
Howdy, Mayor. Touched on everything that we were going to talk about.
Well done. Director of Public Works.
Now, just for the previous meeting, we decided we'll have a spring cleanup citywide and a scrap collection to do a fundraiser for the parks for equipment, and so that's just, there'll be more information on that in March.
When do you start filling the potholes?
At Parkview?
Yes, I take my tire out every morning, going to the Y.
In between snow. That's, no, I, I know where you mean, it's just, we've been kind of waiting for it to quit snowing a little bit, because there's so much ice in there, that we need almost like a 30-day, or 30-temperature, so they thaw out the potholes, so we can fill them in, otherwise, if we fill them in right now, it'll just, with tires and everything, it'll push them right out, but we need the ice to get out of them first to fill them in, but we'll look at some of the bigger ones anyways. Yeah, I know, I know where you mean, yeah, so.
Mr. Mayor, that dialogue does bring up a, a short reminder to me in that if, if citizens call or email you or something with a complaint, I would ask that you either forward that complaint to the department director of that department so that they can address the issue, or so that, or you would forward it to me, and then I would assign to the appropriate staff. I think most of you do that already. Just a good reminder is, you know, the dialogue of like, why did the city plow snow like this, or why did we not fix this street yet, or whatever it might be, or what are we doing about the speeders on the street, whatever it may be, so that people know that there are complaints to you, that our city staff is responsive to that. Please just either forward that to the department director themselves or to me, and then we'll make sure that it gets processed.
Thank you very much. Director of the Library. Did I? Oh, Police Chief. Sorry, I already crossed it out.
Our new police officer is progressing rapidly through his field training program. He's done the minimum number of hours required in his first phase. He, according to Officer Schumacher, has learned the city rapidly and faster than anybody he's ever seen before. We're very pleased with his progress so far, and we're hoping that he'll continue at that rapid pace and be on his own by April 1st, which will then give us 10 out of 11 officer positions filled, and hopefully, July 1st, our medical leave will end, and we're just fine then for officers with our department. That's it.
Thank you very much. Sorry for skipping you. Library, Joint Fire, City Clerk.
As the mayor said, commitment to community recognition dinner tickets are available, and we discussed as well the league and ours. I am coming in Sunday at 9:00 AM to spend at least five hours hacking, sorting, and cleaning to begin the steps of moving. It's, it's already began, if either of you, if anyone takes a peek in the back of the sitting room, there is a mound of things that I have authorized that can be destroyed.
What is the deadline for RSVP for the community dinner?
Just let me know, if you want to reserve some tickets.
Okay.
And also, if you sign.
Thank you. City Treasurer.
I've got anything to say to this one, I would mention.
We didn't audit.
Okay, thank you very much.
Consideration of a motion to convene in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, paragraph 1, per need, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive for bargaining reasons, require a closed session, reference memorandum of understanding with the MPPA in regard to sick and vacation time and pre-annexation agreement with Frederick Farms and cross-worlds business park land purchase.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.